All right. Thank you so much, TJ. Thank you. We'll call this work session to order. First and foremost, good morning to our citizens of Douglas County, to the Board of Commissioners, and to our department heads. Welcome to our work session on, this is June 1st, 2020. Happy June 1st. I would like to start off this morning with the approval of the minutes. Board of Commissioners, please be prepared to approve the minutes accordingly. My second statement today would be, this, again, this is a virtual meeting, and under the Open Records Act, this is acceptable during these unprecedented times. So therefore, there will be no public comment. But however, I do encourage our citizens to please email your individual commissioners, district commissioners, or you please feel free to email me or Mark Till, the county administrator. We're going to move Board of Commissioners right into tab number four, which is a resolution. And tab number four is Authorization to Approve a Resolution of Support for the Southern Conservation Trust to obtain grants, and it requires no match from the county for potential recreation and parks activities at the former Bear Creek Golf Course property, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Ron Roberts, our planning and zoning manager.
Good morning, Commissioner, Madam Chair. I hope you guys are doing well this morning. Yes, so what's before you is a resolution in support of the efforts that the Southern Conservation Trust would be making towards getting some match, not some match, getting some money to do some initial work out at the, what used to be the Bear Creek Golf Course. It's over 300 acres. There's five miles of paved trail, and that is already in place. There's about 26 bridges that are in somewhat disrepair that they need to move on to begin to preserve those. A little history with this is, you know, we did complete the comp plan in 2018. One of the things that citizens stated during that nine-month comprehensive land use plan was the desire for more green space. And so this opportunity is out there. We've already met with, last winter, we had Katie Pace from the Southern Conservation Trust, and Nick Kilburg, who are both on the call as well. Met with Gary Dukes about the potential of what that could be, what that would look like in the future. And then we had the opportunity to meet with Commissioner Carthon and Commissioner Mitchell back in May to discuss this. It's not hammered out exactly what that will be in the future. What we have is the opportunity with this, with the Southern Conservation Trust, for them to move forward to seek some different grant opportunities. So the resolution that is in support of that, it's just, it helps them to get the grant funding that they will need, so that we can, so that they can move forward with preserving the infrastructure that's already in place and things of that nature. But I am, I will answer any questions. And again, Katie Pace and Nick Kilburg from the Southern Conservation Trust are also on the line here today.
Okay, thank you so much, Ron. I would first like to see if Katie Pace and Nick Kilburg could provide just some more insight. Also, Ron, and then I will yield to the Board of Commissioners for questions. Katie, Katie, are you there?
Hi. Hi, Katie. Yes, this is Katie. I'm sorry, I'm saying my webcam's not working. But yes, so we provide eight public nature preserves currently in Fayette County, free of charge to the community. And we were lucky enough to take ownership of the old Bear Creek Golf Course a few years ago, and really want to extend the same courtesy to Douglas County and open it up as a free nature preserve to the community. But in order to do that, we need some grant funding from some large funders. And just having on record that Douglas County is supporting the nature preserve is going to go a long way in getting us the funding that we need to move forward with that. And by doing that, we wouldn't need any funding from Douglas County to be able to offer this nature preserve.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much, Ms. Pace.
And we've been doing this for 30-plus years. So we're great at nature preserves.
Wow. Mr. Nick, is it Nick Kilburg? Would you like to add before I yield to my Board of Commissioners?
I don't think Nick was able to jump on, but he's our Parks Director, and him and his team go in and develop all of our parks. And I know he's mentioned that we really want to be able to save these bridges, because there's already a lot of valuable money in those bridges. So that's a reason why we really want to go ahead and get started.
Okay. Thank you so much, Katie. Board of Commissioners, I believe we have three, and myself, four commissioners on the phone today. Commissioner Guyer, I don't believe is on, so I won't call role. I've heard all of your voices. Commissioner Carthon, I'll start with you. This is, this project is in District 3, and then any other Board, I mean, any other commissioners, please chime in at that point. Commissioner Carthon?
Yes. So I have had a chance to speak with Katie and Ron, and this is a well-needed project for District 3. I know in running, a couple of years ago, I talked to many of people who wanted more trails and more parks. And especially during COVID-19, this is a welcome addition to those in District 3 and Douglas County as a whole. My only concern is how do we make this a solidified partnership between the Southern Conservation Trust and Douglas County? We definitely want them to get these grants, and our support is there. But we also want to make sure that we are included in this moving forward. So my question to Katie is, how do we solidify this partnership?
That's a great question. So really, we would do and duplicate what we do here in Fayette County. So any parks that we manage within the county, we work hand-in-hand with the county to make sure we're building something that's going to be used by the community. So basically, we would be talking to you on a regular basis as we move forward, and letting you know what's going on, and asking questions, and doing community surveys, to make sure that we're not going to put a park in that nobody's going to use, because we don't want to waste our time or money either. And we also want to add features in there that might be very important to the residents over there. So it's going to involve a lot of back-and-forth discussion between us and y'all. And I think this resolution is the first step in showing that we're kind of in this together, and that y'all are really wanting more public recreation.
Okay. To that, and Katie, have you already discussed some of this with the residents who are in Bear Creek, or who are near where this nature preserve took place?
We have. Our Parks Director has gone and spoke at the HOA meetings for the community that surrounds Bear Creek, and they're definitely in support of it. Currently, Bear Creek has become a little bit of a hazard, because it gets a lot of trespassing. The Sheriff's Department's ran a number of people off that have been shooting firearms and four-wheeling. So, you know, right now, it's become more of a hazard to the residents. And so I think they're excited to have something that could potentially increase their property values and provide an amenity to them as well.
Okay. So I just want to press that as we move forward, we continue to have these conversations with the community, and maybe even working with us to get a representation of a committee together over in Bear Creek to ensure that everybody's voice is heard. I'm glad to see that this is moving forward, and I commend Douglas County and the Conservation Trust Company for coming together and seeing what we can do to make the quality of life in Douglas County better. With that, Chairman Jones, yield.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthon. Commissioner Mitchell, as the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee, do you have anything to add? I can see you.
Yeah, yeah, not much to add outside of, if she would explain, so to the general public, what is a nature park? What is that? What does that entail? So that the general public, and I know we had this conversation before, but so they'll know exactly what that entails, what that looks like, and why that they're still supportive of this. And this is the reasoning why, as to what you guys are doing. So, go ahead.
That's a great question, because most people don't know the difference between a park and a nature preserve. So a nature preserve is more conserved, open green space. So we're not looking at something that's going to have lots of playgrounds and lots of active areas. You're looking at passive recreation. The passive recreation doesn't include ball fields or anything like that. It's trail systems. So it's really connecting people back to nature, and giving them a place where they can go and enjoy everything in nature that Douglas County has to offer. So this will have biking trails, hiking trails. There'll also be some pavilions, different things like that. We hope to put a bathroom structure in. But basically, it's just going to be for people to go out and walk their dogs on a leash, and just go run, and enjoy the trail systems over there.
And last but not least, what kind of cost will the Parks and Rec Department and/or Douglas County will incur in embracing this nature park?
Absolutely nothing. And that's the benefit of working with a conservancy. All the money is handled with us. So we will raise support through corporate and foundation funding, and through our own funding, to fund every penny of the park. So y'all will never have to pay a dime for the nature preserve.
Got it, got it. And last but not least, and I know we've had these conversations, and I appreciate you just kind of sharing with the general public. The last question is, what kind of liabilities, if any, that happens at the park that the county would incur, if anything? And I'll also pass that towards also, not only to you, but to our legal department to say, have they had a chance to review this layout? But first, to you, ma'am.
Right. And we can send everything over to the legal department as well, but we carry a very, very high liability policy, and everything falls underneath us, because we already operate so many public nature preserves and private land as it is. We're very accustomed to carrying those policies. And since we will be the owners of the property, all liability will fall to us.
Got it. And I guess Ken, I'm assuming Ken is on the call, but on this chat. Ken, I don't know if you had a chance to review all that?
Hey, Commissioner, this is Ken.
Yes.
Yeah. I concur with what was just said. I think, because they, to the extent it's private ownership, they would have liability responsibility. The government would be, the government is merely supporting this resolution that allows them to get further grant funding. So I don't see a burden, I don't see a burden on the county. If it were county property now, there would be a different issue that we might have to address. But I don't see this particular resolution being problematic.
Okay. Have you had a chance to review the thing, though, Ken?
I'm sorry?
Have you had a chance to review everything?
I haven't seen that sort of resolution. What I have is the actual agenda item, but I'll be glad to look at it, Ron. I'll do it today.
Can you do that today, and kind of report back to the commissioners, kind of what that looks like, and is there any concerns that you, and for those of you who are probably not speaking, you might want to mute your mics, because there's a lot of noise going on. If you'll mute your mics. All right. Now, Ken, can you review that, so, and the commissioners, to ensure what you see is okay, and you can link with what we got? Okay. Madam Chair, I'm going to leave it there, and I'll, I'm done. I mean, go right ahead.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. And Vice Chairman Robinson, I can't see you, but I hear you. I didn't hear you say anything. Would you like to chime in or add before I move on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. Real quick, and I'll be brief. I'm sensitive to the time. When we talk about our trail systems, I recognize this is in District 3. We had once looked at a comprehensive trail system throughout the entire county. So my question becomes, I know this is a nature preserve, and I get into intra-district places and spaces. My question was, will this be able to connect to a broader trail system? That's my first question. Somebody weigh in, who can speak to this? I don't know if Miguel is on the line, but you don't have to speak out of turn if you don't know, but please give me some understanding of how this will connect to a broader trail system. Somebody.
All right, Commissioner, I'll take that one. You know, we've been involved with the Riverland Study, which is a trail network that they're looking at from Beaufort Dam all the way to Chattahoochee Bend National Forest. And that's been going on for some time now with the Trust for Public Land and Atlanta Regional Commission. I've been involved as a stakeholder in that group. I have let them know about the potential at Bear Creek for this future park, and potential connectivity to the overall Riverland Study, which Phase 2 and Phase 3 are both in Douglas County. So we've let them know about that, and have plans to, and it was included in the overall study for the Riverland, as a point of connection that would come from the Chattahoochee River area north to Bear Creek. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, and thank you. It's important that, you know, sort of the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. And sometimes important to push, to your point, a connectivity, that this is not just in isolation, that we do have leverage. There is a bigger picture here, and we're trying to optimize all of our resources and assets at the same time. So I just, I won't belabor this. I know Parks and Rec have this under control, but I just wanted, I didn't want to forget about that, because we did spend some time and energy regarding that conservation, that trail system, that we once talked about, that went all the way down 166, and what that meant for us. So I don't want to lose that body of work, nor the momentum that went into that. So that's all, Madam Chair. I just wanted to bring up some history. I think that's important. And I'll yield the floor at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is Ken.
I hear you. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ron, just to confirm for the commission, if you would. When Bear Creek was developed, it was probably developed as a PUD that had this as an amenity for the subdivision. And I don't know what the acquisition chain has been since the golf course went out of business, but is the community over there, I don't know if it still has a homeowner association or not, is there any opposition to this before this board considers this resolution? Because it actually, it's an amenity that backs up to some homeowners who were there at a time when they bought, had a golf course. And I know there's been a lot of controversy about that over time. Do we know the position of the homeowners?
Well, the Southern Conservation Trust staff has met with the HOA, Ken, on a number of occasions, and people are supportive of it. From a standpoint, we talked to Commissioner Carthon and Commissioner Mitchell about what actually we could possibly add or have at this preserve area. You know, and that's something that we would be doing as staff, helping to, you know, with some of the surveys and some of the other outreach that we would be doing along that corridor, because we're planning on looking at 166 corridor anyways. And so we would include in that the opportunity for citizens to weigh in, and specifically contiguous property owners to this parcels, that would allow for them to have some say, some insight into what would actually, the other potentials that could be developed at this location. I do want to add that, you know, if we have to, you know, look at potential rezoning of something, then that's something we would address later on, but that would come from the organic discussion with the property owners themselves, so that we, you know, discerned exactly what it is. If it's just a passive park area, then I don't see any conflict at all. And then that's actually what Katie and Nick have talked to them about currently, and people seem to be supportive of that for sure. It's a way for them to actually secure that, because right now, as Katie alluded to early in the call, a lot of people are getting in, and they're riding the trails in, and the power lines and stuff like that, and it's causing kind of a problem. So, you know, having it more secure would definitely be a benefit to these citizens and residents.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Bernard. All right. Thank you so much, Ron, for this presentation, for the presentation this morning. And we look forward to great things happening in that Bear Creek Golf Course area. Tab number five is related to there, we have grants, Authorization to Accept the COVID-19 Grant Funds in the amount of $9,641.26 from the Secretary of State's Office, and amend the Board of Elections budget, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Kidd, are you there? Milton Kidd. Mark Till, would you like to take it for him?
Yeah, Milton's on here. So essentially, these are funds that he's receiving from the state.
Yes, I'm on here.
Okay.
He's on there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. These are essentially our funds, part of the, that HAVA grant that the federal government passed to help alleviate some of the concerns around COVID-19 for state and local governments. They have a $15,000 matching fund. This is the first round of our applications that we've submitted to them. The $15,000 is the total amount that you can actually request. So this one, this first round is for $9,641, $9,641.21. And I fully anticipate that we will supply information to them as well to receive the rest of the $15,000 matching funds from the state.
Okay. Thank you so much, Director Kidd. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners, or any comments?
Chairman Jones.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Carthon?
Director Kidd, this question is for you. What will these funds be used for during COVID-19 for those individuals who are coming into the courthouse and other venues around the county for voting? Yeah, you are muted.
Okay. For voting purposes, we've supplied masks to all of our poll workers. We've also provided masks for all of our voters that come into a polling location. We cannot mandate that they put on a mask outside of the courthouse, but we have those masks available. And in most cases, voters have complied with that. Part of our other initiatives that we've taken, we've secured different cleaning methods to clean and sanitize polling locations that have been supplied to all of our polling locations. If you have voted in person this election, you also notice that with your voter access card, each voter a stylus that they can individually use that will be sanitized, and has been sanitized between each voter using those stylus in order to minimize contact and touching any of the screens in our locations. We also have sanitizing stations with hand sanitizer located throughout the polling location to alleviate any voter concerns with sanitizing their hands, even though they're not actually touching those surfaces. So these grants were matching funds, that they had three general areas that you can submit for, any security options that you've supplied for the elections, any accessibility items that you've had to purchase, and any items related to COVID, specifically related to COVID-19 that you've had to purchase, including mask sanitizing options, like I said, the stylus and things like that.
Great. Thank you so much for that, because we do want voters to know, and the public to know, that we're taking all steps in order to ensure that they have a safe voting season. And just to also let them know that we're taking into consideration that if you don't mail in your ballot, you do have the right to come to the courthouse or to any of the voting precincts and cast a ballot without fear. So thank you.
You do have the right to come to a polling location and cast a ballot, but we are still accepting absentee ballot applications, and continue to mail out absentee ballots, all the way up until the technical deadline is June the 5th. But if anyone is considering mailing in an absentee ballot, I ask that they go ahead and submit those applications now, and not wait until Friday's date, because those ballots have to leave our office via the post office. But we are still mailing our ballots. We're still accepting ballots. If voters have absentee ballots in their possession that they have not returned to our office, there is a drop box located in front of the courthouse at 8700 Hospital Drive. It is clearly labeled as absentee balloting box. I ask voters to either utilize that, or they can just mail it into us as well.
Thank you so much, Director Kidd. And I do have one other question for you. I have had a couple of emails of constituents who have not received their absentee ballots yet. What is the best way for them to check the status of those absentee ballots?
Okay. The best way to check the status of your absentee ballot is to log on to MyVoter page. That URL is mbp.sos.ga.us. But the quickest and easiest way to do that, if a voter types in Georgia, MyVoter page in whatever search engine they use, it will be the first option. It will ask you to enter your first initial, your last name, the county in which you live. You'll be able to see your absentee ballot information. That particular website also contains your sample ballot. If voters are intending on voting in person, they can pull their sample ballot, and that helps to alleviate some of the time inside of the voting booth. But if a voter does not see their absentee ballot as being issued on that MyVoter page, they can always give the office a call, and we can track down if that ballot has been issued, or if we need to do a duplication and reissue a ballot. We do not control the post office, so sometimes absentee ballots have gotten, have not made their way to a voter's home. But in those cases, we cancel out that ballot. We have a contact person with the post office that we try to track down that ballot and see where it fell through the chain, and we reissue an absentee ballot for that voter. But if they have any concerns with their absentee ballot, give us a call. My staff is here from 8 to 6. Well, we're here every day of the week, but we're here in normal business hours as well.
Thank you so much, Director Kidd. And could you give that phone number, just for those who are listening, and who may go back and listen to this recording?
Okay. You can reach my office, one second, let me get the correct line. You can reach my office at 770-920-7213. Once again, that's 770-920-7213. That's voter registration and elections questions can all come to that same number, and it'll be disseminated to the correct person.
Thank you so much. Chairman Jones, I yield.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthon, and also Director Kidd. All right. Any other questions or comments before I move forward, Board? All right. I'm going to move on to tab number six, Authorization to Accept Families First Coronavirus Response Act Funding, FF-CRA from the Atlanta Regional Commission, in the amount of $65,594.21 to provide nutrition services, home-delivered meals, HDC-2, and congregant meals, CMC-2, for adults age 60-plus, and kinship caregivers age 55-plus, and amend the budget. This contract does not require a match. Dr. Gilchrist, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much. Yes, we have received an amount of $65,594.21 to help meet the food insecurity needs of older adults in Douglas County. The funds have been specifically earmarked for seniors who live alone, and those who live in senior communities, such as Alfred Fowler, Howland Park, and Connors Village. So what we will do is, we've already conducted surveys of those communities to see how many seniors may be in need of food. And we will provide hot meals to them, and also emergency food boxes to them with these funds.
Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Gilchrist. Any questions for Dr. Gilchrist, Board of Commissioners? Okay, sounds pretty, oh, Commissioner Carthon, I'm sorry.
I know. I'm talking a lot today. These are all great things and good subject matters. Dr. Gilchrist, have you, can you talk to us a little bit about how those hot meals will be handled? Are we utilizing any of the businesses within Douglas County to help with those congregant meals? How are we doing that? What is your plan? And I'm sure you have one, so that's why I'm asking.
Absolutely. Recently, we received $4,144 from the Atlanta Region Commission to provide emergency meals to those to those seniors who are on our waitlist. They're not active on our roster as of yet. They're currently on our waitlist. And so what we did, we felt that it would be a win-win situation for the older adults and for businesses, small businesses. And so we began that service today. We partnered with Blue Rose Bistro. We also partnered with Landmark Diner and Farmer's Table. We, the funds will help us provide 23 hot meals to 18 seniors that are on our waitlist. And so Landmark Diner, we are using them this week. Next week, we'll use Farmer's Table, and then after that, we'll use Blue Rose Bistro to help meet the, help meet the needs. With these funds here, we can do some very creative things because the funds do not have to meet the, the meals do not have to meet the nutritional value. And so we'll go back around to businesses in the community to try to see how we can be creative and serve all of the older adults in Douglas County who may have a need. And with the food boxes, we're looking at local farmers and local farmer markets and also with Gooder Food Rescue out of the city of Atlanta to see if we can put together weekly boxes for older adults in the county. What we will be able to do is Douglas County, Madam Chair and the Board of Commissioners provided us with $10,000 to utilize. And so what we've done with that money, we sent out care packages to seniors in the county, and the care packages included toiletries and chef-stable foods. And what we're also going to do with the remainder of those funds is do a drive-through food box day where seniors in the county will be able to come to our facility and will, they pop their trunks and we'll be able to fill their trunks with fresh fruit and vegetables.
Thank you, Dr. Gilchrist. It's good to know that we are all in this together in Douglas County and that we're utilizing those businesses here and those farm-to-table entities here to help meet the need in our county. With that, Chairman Jones, I yield.
All right, thank you so much. Any other comment or questions for Dr. Gilchrist, Board of Commissioners? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carthen, and thank you so much, Dr. Gilchrist. We're gonna move on to tab number seven as one of our business items, tab number 789 of Business Items. Tab number seven is Approval of the Connect Douglas 2021 through 2023 Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Act as required by the Federal Transit Administration with the goal based on the FTA methodology and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Gary Watson.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As a Federal Transit Administration grantee, one of our requirements is that every three years, we have to set a goal for disadvantaged business enterprise in our federally funded projects. Now, one thing that we need to point out is that the FTA has a very specific set of rules and formulas for setting this goal. It's based on the federally funded projects that we expect to undertake, the total number of available certified vendors in a particular business code, and the total number of available certified DBEs in a particular business code. Our compliance officer, Janet Willis, is on the call today. Janet has spent a lot of time researching and developing our goal using the FTA methodology. And so I'm going to turn the conversation over to Janet to talk a little more about our goal and how we came about that. Janet, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here, Gary. Good morning. As Gary stated, the DBE goal is required to be based on availability of certified DBEs in your areas where the projects will be let. The issue, our DBE goal is projected to be about 2.2%. And one reason why it is so low is because the projects that we are anticipating to let are kind of highly specialized. The more specialized a project is, the less chance you're gonna have of certified DBEs. And as you can see, we're anticipating to let contracts for shelters, benches, and receptacles, bike equipment, fairbox technology, and even the planning study since it's transportation-related. And we just didn't have DBEs in those areas, but we're receiving federal money on those projects. So we are required to, to count those dollars even though they're earning certified DBEs. And that's basically how, why the DBE goal is so low, is 2.2%. Now, if you have any questions specifically about the DBE goal, I'll be happy to answer any.
Okay, Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for Janet Willis? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, I hear your voice.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions. The first question is, how will we track compliance? And I know you gave a framework, but this is important to us. Obviously, the federal standard is something that we use here locally. When we introduced, Madam Carthen introduced the disadvantaged business enterprise ordinance here locally. So we use sort of the federal standard and then obviously we leverage other things. So I'm gonna come back to, and Janet, you probably can answer this. How will we track it and how well are we doing so far? Let's start with that.
Well, now, this goal won't start until 2021. And how we attract this is this, the whole 2.2% will be race neutral. And that's because we didn't put a race-conscious goal in here because if you look at the projects, there's really no subcontracting opportunity available. So we don't anticipate being able to, to come up with any type of race-conscious goal. Unless when we purchase those shelters and benches, we decide that we want to go outside of the county to have them installed. The assumption was that county personnel would install the shelters and benches once that time comes, which is kind of the norm. But sometimes the county personnel be so busy at the time that you go out to bid for that work. And there are quite a few contractors out there that do that work, but we just didn't include it in the goal because the assumption in the beginning is that, from the very beginning is that the county personnel is gonna do that work in-house. But we will, we will monitor the goal from the very beginning. And once we put the contract out, it's, like I said, it's race-neutral. So we have to do some mitigation such as making sure that DBEs are, DBEs are aware that we're putting these contracts out, but they won't have a goal, a subcontracting goal on them.
Well, there lies my fundamental issue, and I welcome your input, which is what you have policies and ordinance in place, but you can't fulfill them. And this is not personal when I say this. They're not fulfillable. And it's sort of like this symbolic, we go through the motions. It's like, well, there's a disparity. There's a fundamental disparity on, when we talk about people having access and equitableness. Well, this is where equity is dealt with. It's dealt with through ordinances and through policy. And so, again, this is where I look to stab to, if a policy is in place or ordinance, then there are actions, implementations you need to line up, not to run contrary to that, to that spirit. And so, and this is, this is, this right here, if Madam Carthen controlled the meeting earlier, this right here, I can't move off because this is where we are as a county. And so I appreciate your involvement and I appreciate what you've just said. And I'm listening to the logic lines, it's okay, but we're conceding where there's opportunity to give others an opportunity that have been historically locked out, but then we bring it in-house, we just do it ourselves. But we're working against the very policy that we're putting in place where at least that is running against what the Board of Commissioners are looking to do. Right? And so it's that type of subtle side stuff that there needs to be a more connected justice. It says, okay, but I need a consciousness, right? It can't just be, well, I get it, but it's like, then we're just going through the motions of what I call government checkboxes. But it has to come alive, right? It has to truly acknowledge and fulfill, else we're going through the motions. So, all right, I'm gonna let that go. All right, you guys got, you know exactly where I'm at. All right, number two is as I get 2021 and I get going forward. And so will there be, and Madam Chair, we probably can take this just into transportation committee, and I, that's why I don't wanna push this to our, but will there be an opportunity where we can consciously, and Gary, maybe this is really to Gary, will we have a chance to outsource some things or will there be some recommendations that will come forth that will help us fulfill it versus we just wanna get it done and go through the motions? I mean, do you see opportunities, like we said, benches and things like that, like the plexiglass on the buses and retrofitting of the buses? Or I'm just making this up, the quarantine that, the sheltering in place that we're having to do. I mean, will there be opportunities to help with that? The purchase of additional buses? Or I'm making this up, but if I think through this, like, no, there's no opportunities. We just haven't thought through them. Gary, can you talk to me real quick and that'll be my last question, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, Commissioner, your points are very well taken. And let me say this, even though we, we may be setting our Federal Transit Administration DBE goal at 2.2%, we will try our absolute, absolute best to go way above and beyond that. However, when you're dealing with federal regulations and reporting, it's, it's much better to exceed your goal than to follow under it. So, because that, that generally kicks in a whole new set of reporting that you have to follow through. So while, based on the FTA methodology, we do need to set our goal at 2.2%, we will make every effort to strive to go far, far beyond that. And we will look at the projects that we have moving forward and, and turn over every stone to see what kind of DBE possibilities we have in that. And also keep in mind, this, this is just a proposed list of projects. As we move forward with our programs and services, there may be other contracting opportunities that come up that will be available for, for DBEs. So we, while, while we're having to set this goal so low, we certainly anticipate doing much better than that with it.
No, I get it. And I think, and Gary, you're, you know, I have strong confidence in how you frame these federal approaches of federal parts. So we're fine. I think, you know, I'm just bringing out more of our overall collective performance against that. But yet, we're going in the right direction. We're moving forward. So duly noted, I'll just yield and take this back to transportation. Madam Chair, thank you. I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Robinson. All right, thank you so much. Commissioner Carthen.
Thank you so much for allowing me to take the floor on this issue. Our past DBE participation review, I looked at that, and from 2016 to 2019. In 2016, we were at zero, but we spent $621,958. In 2017, we were at zero, yet we spent $276,381. In 21, in 2018, we spent $121,385, zero participation. 2019, $1,560,677, 8% of that went to DBE. So I want the county to know and the citizens of Douglas County to know, we went from 0 to 8% instituting the DBE and because Gary Watson pushed and because Janice Watson came on board and because we got that DBE policy passed in the county. And so I do want people to know that we are systematically trying to change the process and move forward so that we're inclusive because it's important. It is, it's totally important, and especially during the climate of which we live in today, that we want people to know that Douglas County is changing. So while we do know that there is room for improvement and 2% is what we have today, we want to ensure that we continue to progress forward. So I thank you guys for what you are doing. However, we gotta push for a little bit more. So that may mean going to Atlanta, that may mean going to Cobb, that may mean advertising outside the county so that people will know Douglas County is open for business and that we are fair across the board. And we have to be because these are federal dollars. So again, I wanna push that issue. I wanna echo the sentiments of Commissioner Robinson and kudos to what we have done to get to this point. So with that, Madam Chair, I yield.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen. And any other comment, Board of Commissioners, I'm gonna move on at this point. Thank you so much, Director Watson and also Mrs. Willis, thank you so much for your contribution. And again, thank you, Commissioner Carthen, for that DBE effort here in the county. Certainly, there were some great discussions, me and you had, certainly when you took over as Chairman of the Purchasing Oversight Committee, was concerned about our DBE status and you took it and ran with it. And I commend you again, wholeheartedly, for moving the needle from 0 to 8%. So that means, and I heard you loud and clear, we have a lot more room for growth and we're just proud of the aid and we're going, our target is always 100% or either at least 50% of this DBE status. So thank you for propelling and moving this initiative DBE forward here in Douglas County. We're gonna move on to our next item and my computer is tab number eight, Authorization for Douglas County Sheriff's Office to Renew the Chaplain Services Agreement Starting July 4th, 2020 with Reverend Edwin Ford and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, pending legal review. Major Holmes?
Madam Chair, this is Ken. I talked to Bobby before this meeting. He was having some difficulty in accessing remotely the meeting, so I'll speak for him unless he's on. Bobby, are you there?
It sounds like he's not. Madam Chair, this is simply a renewal of the contract with Reverend Edward Ford to serve as the chaplain at the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Same terms, it's just simply a renewal and it's term-toe at any time up to seven days' notice. This really comes to us, aside from the budget, I guess, impact more as a courtesy because the sheriff has the authority to hire a chaplain. Having said that, it's just a renewal.
Okay, thank you. Pretty self-explanatory. Any questions or comments from the Board before I go forward? All right, I'm gonna move on.
Yeah, did this, I don't see the dollar amount attached to this. Is it the same dollar amount as it was last year?
Well, the dollar, Madam Carthen, I believe that it, well, I was told by Bobby, it was, it's for $40,000, it's for one year and with all the other terms from the last one. So I assume, and maybe Mark can address, I think it was 40 last year as well.
Yeah, I have not seen it, but I was told it was the same.
I believe that number is the same, Commissioner Carthen. We can verify between now and tomorrow for you, but that's what Bobby told me.
Thank you so much, Attorney Bernard. Thank you, Madam Chair, I yield with that.
Okay, thank you so much, Attorney Bernard and also Commissioner Carthen, thank you. We're gonna move on to tab number nine, Authorization to Approve a MOU with GDOT to Install Roadway Lighting at State Route 402 and I-20 at State Route 6 Thornton Road, North and South ramps and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Our county administrator, Mark Till?
Yes, this is the same as the MOUs we recently approved for Highway 5, Lee Road, and I think possibly Liberty Road. So it's a MOU with the Georgia Department of Transportation to maintain the streetlights or the roadway lighting, as they call it, in the MOU for Thornton Road and I-20.
Okay. Any questions from the Boards or comments? All right, sounds pretty self-explanatory. We're excited about the lights coming in that area and all the other interstate ramps as well, along that I-20 corridor here in Douglas County. All right, Board of Commissioners, any other comments before I talk to, certainly ask our Attorney Bernard if we need to go into executive session? Any other comments, Board of Commissioners? Attorney Bernard, do we need to go into executive session?
We do for litigation, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
At the point of order, will we be able to come back and make comments after our executive session?
You will, yes, Vice Chairman, we will.
Okay. I yield. I make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Okay.
We override, Terania.
Yeah, I saw. Okay, we have a motion in a second, in the discussion. We have a motion in a second. Please indicate by saying yes, and state your name. Ramona Jackson Jones, yes.
District One, Commissioner Mitchell, yes.
District Three, Commissioner Mitch, District Three, Terania Carthman, yes.
Okay. Vice Chairman Robinson, are you?
Yes, ma'am, so I will leave, because this is executive session. Commissioner Carthman, Vice Chairman will be calling you and hopefully do the same system, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
But she hasn't got his confirmation, though, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I don't have his confirmation, is he?
Okay, let me call him back then, all right?
Okay.
Yeah, we just hung up, one second. You're muted, Commissioner Carthman.
Commissioner Robinson, we need, yeah, we are voting to go into executive session, and we need you to state whether or not you agree to go into executive session with your name and yea or nay, yes or no.
Kelly Robinson, yea.
Okay, thank you so much. We have a unanimous decision to move forward, the motion carries, so thank you. We will hang up, right, Mark Teal, and then?
Yes. So Commissioner Mitchell, if you'll log into the invite Jessica sent this morning?
Yep.
And then we'll invite everybody else on. Just keep your Microsoft Teams on.
Got it, thank you.
And you'll just call us back, right, Mark, my phone?
Yes, ma'am. Make sure you keep your MS Teams on.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you so much, TJ, and Board of Commissioners, thank you as well for executive session, and we have returned back and to our citizens. Commissioner Robinson, Vice Chairman Robinson, I believe you said you had a comment, and so now I'll yield to all the Commissioners if you had a comment before we close today or end this meeting. Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, one comment regarding the business item, and the second one would be more of a, an announcement, so I'll take it in that order. Obviously, our next Finance Committee meeting is when we're going to all have an opportunity to hear from our staff, specifically our advisor, on what our current state is from a financial perspective. There's an awful lot going on in society right now, on multiple levels. But yet, at a local level, we still have to keep our eyes on the ball of what our current financial state is. Obviously, the full Board of Commissioners are aware of this, and we've been anticipating this. So at our Finance Committee, there'll be a revealing of our current state, financial affairs, after our stress test is completed against our financials, as well as several options that may be available to the Board of Commissioners. They'll be presented to the Finance Committee first, the very next meeting, it will go to the full Board of Commissioners. There will not be a recommendation from the Finance Committee, as is our process. On something of this magnitude, it's just more of a making sure it's properly presented. We all equally get to look at this off the cuff, and based on the full Board Commissioners seeing it, then they will give feedback, and then that will go into the Finance Committee as to what options the full Board wants us to pursue. Again, we're not going to make a recommendation to the full Board, because your input matters. And then obviously, we'll go through the process thereafter without belaboring it. But I know people have been asking us, you know, well, what's our plan? Well, there's two plans. There's the plans of how we're going to go back as a county, and then there's also a financial plan, is how do we weather a storm when we know that we had softness in our local economy? What is that impact, and how will we deal with this? And so obviously, I just wanted to put everybody on notice that that meeting should be, what, two weeks from today at 2:00? And so I just wanted to bring that up. So I want to yield on that comment regarding the committee. To that point also, I'd like to make an announcement that for District Two, for those constituents, we are doing a State of the District staff, Rick, TJ, all of you, you guys probably should have received it or will receive that communication of full support. That State of the District will be this coming Friday at 7:00. And so this is something that has historically been done in our district, but because of the pandemic and because of a lot of different things, and it just, we just, the timing wasn't right. But the timing seemed to be just about right to give a current and future state of where District Two is going. So all citizens who are interested in that, you will get more information, but this coming Friday at 7:00 with District Two, a State of our District. Madam Chair, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Carthman, you have anything to add, or Commissioner Mitchell?
I do, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Just an announcement that on June 15, at 6:30 PM, I will be doing a quarantine, which is a play on words with the quarantine, with the quarantine that's going on, and just getting information out to the constituents. But I want their questions, I want to be able to answer those questions in regards to what people have on their hearts and minds regarding this time, as we start to open back up. And to piggyback off of what Commissioner Robinson said, what will that look like for the county? What will that look like for our residents? And what would that look like for us here? So again, that will be June 15 at 6:30 PM. We ask that constituents, please submit your questions by June 12 at 5:00 PM. You can do that by emailing me, tcarthman@co.douglas.gap.us. Also email me regarding any questions that you have on any of our upcoming meetings, whether you want your comments to be read online, just as Chairman Jones indicates at the beginning of the meeting. I have had some questions, some emails regarding planning that the city of Douglasville is doing, and I just want to let constituents know, commissioners and the city are separate, so I can't really weigh in on what the city is doing. However, if you do email me, I will reach out on your behalf, just to see what I can find out. So with that, Chairman Jones, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthman. Commissioner Mitchell, you have any comments?
Well, I don't have any comments, outside of great meeting. Let's move on to tomorrow.
Okay, well, I'll just close things out today. Again, citizens and the Board of Commissioners, thank you so much for joining us for our June 1 work session today. And Commissioner Carthman, to, as you said, in response to what you just said regarding citizens reaching out to you about the city, I do have a COVID-19 town hall coming on June 4, which is this coming Thursday at 6:30. And both mayors, Mayor Robinson from Douglasville and Mayor McDougall from Villarica are invited, and they will share an update regarding, so that'd be a perfect time, and I hope our citizens are listening. And also, citizens, we've had an opportunity to take a deep dive into the public health component. Last week, I had a town hall on mental health, because that is, that element is very important as we go forward, because all of us are stressed in one form, one way or another. And then last but not least, I wanted to take a look at the economic side, this town hall that I have coming up this Thursday. So I've invited, we'll be inviting Chris Pumphrey from the Economic Development side, Breezy Straighten from Workforce Development, and then Sarah Ray from the Small Businesses, Business Component. So please stay tuned, that information will be released today, but certainly we'd love for our citizens to sit in, so we could talk about the economic side as well. With that being said, I would just like to give a quick update. I hope everyone is staying safe during, amid this coronavirus pandemic, and then also wanted to share that as of today, or should I say, as of last night at 7:00 PM, we had 543 confirmed cases of COVID-19 here in Douglas County, with 25 deaths at this time. And my heart goes out to the families, and also to our deceased members of our county. And we are just, again, we are in this together, we are fighting the good fight, and I appreciate all the great things that we are doing collectively with our discipline to make sure that we are taking advantage of that social distancing component, making sure that we are definitely wearing a mask in those required areas. Certainly, it's recommended, but I know it's a person who has worn a mask most of her career in surgery, I realize that it is not a comfortable situation. You have to learn to breathe, and it's a tight fit on your face, but I do appreciate the citizens' discipline here in Douglas County. That sanitation component is very, very important as we go forward, and also with the disinfection of your surfaces, and making sure that you have that good hand hygiene. So citizens, we are in this together. Again, thank you for joining our work session today. Board of Commissioners, thank you for your time and talent as we go forward, and look forward to our Board of Commissioners meeting tomorrow at 10:00 AM. Again, thank you, and if there's nothing else to come before this board, this meeting is, Commissioner Carthman?
Yes. If you were going to mention this, but thank you so much for the floor, just a quick second that I just wanted to congratulate those protesters who came to Douglas County yesterday and did an outstanding job of keeping the peace. We all know what has happened in our country, it does not affect Douglas County, it affects us all. So my prayers go out to all of those families who have lost family members in regard to COVID, and also those family members who have lost loved ones in regards to senseless killings. Douglas County, we are united, we want to continue to stand united, and we want to continue to keep the peace, and we pray that that continues to happen. Thank you to those officers yesterday who exemplified what great office, officer and community looks like, coming together, and for your leadership, Chairman Jones, and making sure that those sheriff officers and others have what they needed in order to keep order, keep peace, and let people exercise their First Amendment rights. So kudos to you and your administration, and thank you. I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthman, you are so more than welcome. And also, I want to make sure that we include the Fire Department, who certainly you serve as the Vice Chairman, they were there as well yesterday, and I know Commissioner Guyser would be as proud as well, that they represented, and also our paramedics were there, and everything went quite well. And my heart goes out to the Floyd family. And again, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthman, for bringing that to light. We are in this together, and justice shall reign. All right, well, with that being said, Board of Commissioners, if there's nothing else to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Bye-bye.